The planning board's meeting on today, September seventeenth. Roll call vote of attendees, please alphabetical order.
Clark Brewer here.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Kevin Hein here, present.
And Birgit Medweschev. Here.
Perfect. Thank you. We have a fairly straightforward and limited agenda and we'll roll right into it. If Birgit, you can read, can you access, I know you can read, but can you access the items to read?
Yeah, I'm just gonna read it out. It's not modified as I usually do because I just, you know, kind of accessed it. So pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight and Chapter thirty, twelve point seven J. Of the Cohasset zoning bylaws, the planning board will hold a virtual public hearing via Zoom. Webinar ID eight seven five two zero one four seven seven two eight. On September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. For village district site plan review and special permit modification for property being shown on Cohasset assessors maps. E five zero one eight zero one eight one Pleasant Street, Cohasset, Massachusetts, zero twenty twenty-five. The application is requesting modifications to the twenty twenty-four planning board decision. The application is submitted by One Pleasant Street Cohasset LLC of Two Heritage Lane, Linfield, Massachusetts, zero one nine four zero. A copy of the applications and plan accompanying documents are in file for viewing in the town clerk's office at Cohasset Town Hall. Forty-one Highland Avenue, Monday to Thursday, eight A M. to four thirty P M. and Friday, eight A M. to twelve P M. Electronic versions, that's more relevant for this one here because we can't go to the office anymore. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting the Cohassetma.org five twenty-four. Active Planning Board Application Site. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated.
Very good. Thank you, Birgit. The time has been designated. It's now. I trust that the applicants and the representatives. Are in attendance and I see Attorney DeLeese has been promoted and is visible. Attorney DeLeese, will you be speaking for on behalf of the applicants?
Yes, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. Take it away if you if you will.
Great. So with me tonight, I see on the screen is Manny Rabbit. Manny is the applicant's lawyer for certain types of matters and he's joining us tonight. And then in addition to that. Cassandra, you might have Frank Rosetti in the queue somewhere. Frank is on our team as well. Just very briefly and piggybacking off of Amy, since I know that there are conflicts, I do think that this is pretty straightforward. I'll try and keep it quick. Years ago, you issued a special permit to allow for the building that was on the property to be raised and reconstructed. As a mixed-use project, commercial use on the first floor and on the second and third floors, a total of fourteen residential. Apartments. The zoning bylaw only required that for the density that we restrict two of those units. But we voluntarily restricted four and by having them be apartments, the town was able to get the benefit of. Including all fourteen of the units into its affordable housing inventory. Which was a great benefit to the town. After that happened, this property, as you know. Was the subject of discussions for a new town hall, which ended up being not supported by the town. But in preparation for that, due to the fact that there would be a component. Of a potential sale to the town, this board last year amended the prior issued special permit. So as to allow the the units to be sold as condominiums as opposed to apartments. The net impact to that of the town. Was that the town would then not have the benefit of all fourteen units added to its affordable housing inventory. But there was obviously a benefit because there was a contemplated transaction with the town. So here we are now in twenty twenty-five. The building was constructed before you converted it from apartments to condos. It really was built as condos. There's there's no, excuse me, as apartments. There's no, you know. Storage space and amenities that you typically would see in condominium ownership. And so. We're back to you now to see if you would agree to amend. The prior issued special permit and the modification of that. By allowing these now to be come apartment units again. Which would bring your affordable housing inventory back into play. You would be able to count all fourteen units. If you were to vote to approve this tonight. We would be re-engaging our affordable housing consultants to amend the prior filed documents with the state. And try and do this as quickly as we can. The building is already up. And I think we might have to go through a quick process with the building department. Based on my discussion with John Hallen to, because now we're dealing with apartments as opposed to condominium units. In addition, this applicant is fantastic insofar as. The change in use provoked the sewer betterment. The sewer department had agreed to take payments in one-fourteenth slices. As each condominium unit was sold. But nonetheless, my client just paid the town the entire betterment amount, which was approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's all set and. I'm really happy to have this application. I think it's a tremendous benefit for the town and I'll turn it over to the board.
Thank you, Attorney DeLeese. Anyone else have anything to present on behalf of the applicants? I see other attendees have been promoted here. If not, we can go forward. Through the board members to see if there's any questions, issues or concerns with what you've just presented. On behalf of the applicant.
Frank and Manny are just here to answer questions, so.
Okay, great. I'm gonna start off just with a clarification. All fourteen units, it's a fourteen-unit building. All fourteen units would be designated as affordable housing. Under this amendment as put forth in front of us. Is that is that right?
No, twenty-five percent of the fourteen units would be deed restricted. For affordable housing purposes. That means four units. However, pursuant to state law, because we are doing twenty-five percent. And because the building is fully apartments for the residential portion. The town would have the benefit of counting all fourteen as satisfying its affordable housing inventory, but only four will be deed restricted.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I understand these units are a mixture of single and double bedroom units?
Yeah, so.
Of the twenty-five percent. What would be the makeup of the four units specifically with regard to their? Bedroom numbers?
So of the fourteen units, seven are single and seven are double bedrooms. The or two bedrooms. Of the of the seven one bedrooms. Two of those will be designated affordable and of the seven two-bedroom units, two of those would be designated affordable.
Okay, that's. Equitable with regard to numbers, two single, two double. Of the four deed restricted properties. Would become. Affordable as per the way the application is presented here. I didn't have any other questions. Do any other board members have questions?
Yeah, just a clarification. The the term apartment is a little bit confusing to some or maybe people who are listening. I think for affordable housing, we use the term rental or ownership. And there's an incentive system built into the Mass General Laws for rental and transient housing. That's why we would get the benefit of all fourteen units on our subsidized housing inventory, the S H I. So that's just a clarification I wanted to make.
Yeah, should we should we worry about the wordage here? I mean, should should?
It's just a matter of rental or apart. The the term apartment was used, but but really the term is rental or ownership.
Okay.
I I agree. I I think it, I think you want to stay consistent with the language that's used in state law, so I would recommend using the word rental and I appreciate the clarification, Clark.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that as well, Clark. Amy, I'm sorry, Deirdre.
Sorry, I just forgive my ignorance. So the that this would mean that those four apartments are into perpetuity. As rentals as long as the owner owns the building or Carolyn can answer that for me. What if the building gets sold? What happens then? Sorry.
That's a good question and valid one. Who could provide clarification on that?
Carolyn? I was gonna say, I'm happy to jump in here, but Jeff can answer this as well. The four units that'll be deed restricted. Will be in perpetuity or for the longest extent allowed by law, whatever the exact language is that the it's a standard deed rider. Under for these what they call local action units, but yes, they would they would remain affordable.
So I'm just gonna jump in. My, I haven't looked at that question, Deidra, but my recollection is that. The extent of the law is thirty years. And it can't be any more than that. And so that's where it's at, I believe. Could be wrong.
I I think, Jeff, I think that has actually changed. I think that 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 was an interpretation at one point. And most of the ones that I deal with now, they're in perpetuity or for the longest extent permitted by law, whichever seems to be longest. And then sometimes, and then sometimes what we've done in a forty B context, not necessarily in the in a local action unit context is. We would have the subsidizing agencies regulatory agreement and their deed rider. And then we sometimes would also add on the town's deed rider after that. So in the event that. The subsidizing agency no longer existed, for example, or if they walked away from the affordable housing program. We would have our own that would typically kick in afterwards and keep that going.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff.
Did any other board members have questions? For the applicants and or their representatives?
I would just want to make sure that everybody understands that the downstairs. Area of the building is now a childcare center. And I am just, I'm I'm making a comment about it just so that we're aware of it. And whether or not there's some issues that we would need to address.
Issues such as?
Well, I just, it's, you know, it's a mixed use and it has. Multiple vehicles in a parking lot with children that are close by, so I'm just wanting everybody. If everybody knew it was gonna be a childcare center, that's great, but I think we have to be mindful of the fact. That we have a situation in which we have a dual-use facility and it's gonna have its own set of issues as time goes on.
Yeah, so I I've seen that. Facility and the lots associated with it and appears to have reserved parking and controlled parking. There's a public lot immediately adjacent to the One Pleasant Street. Building and associated parking. But there is a gate that controls access on the west side of the property. And I believe there is controlled access because. There's there's specific flow pattern for cars to move through that area. I I I don't know of any other restrictions or anything that else that would come into play, Amy. By virtue of there's a tenant in the first floor that is a childcare facility and. You know, their use is allowed and other uses would be allowed as and if there's any conflict between the two, obviously. That should be resolved by the parties involved. Immediately and you know, it's it's not and it's not being used right now, so that's gonna change. So I'm sure the owners and managers of that childcare facility are aware of that, that this isn't just gonna be a. Single tenant or just them and maybe another couple tenants. It's gonna be multiple tenants when this. Should this can change over with our approval here. I trust that the number of parking is sufficient for this property. I'm just gonna add. And ask for clarification on that for what's required in our zoning for the number of parking for each unit. Can that be? Just clarified, please, and or acknowledged by the applicants?
Yeah, let me jump in. I was the lawyer who represented the former owner of the property who. Applied for and was given the permit from this board. My recollection is that because we're in the village, the commercial use. Does might not even require parking because we're within a certain distance of a municipal parking lot. Nonetheless, what we did was we designated parking spaces for the residential apartments. That are designated for those apartments. And then we calculated the. Retail and at the time it was proposed to be retail and a restaurant use. And we determined the total number of parking spaces that that use would require and we provided parking, I believe. That conformed to that even though we didn't have to. And when I looked into this a couple of months back. I remember thinking that those those commercial parking spaces, the requirements. Regardless of whether you're in the village district or not. Exceed by a fair number, the required parking spaces for the school use. So it's my opinion and I haven't done the analysis. I don't have it in front of me. That you probably don't even need parking under the bylaw because of the proximity to municipal uses, but nonetheless. The amount of parking spaces that were provided exceed the required amount under the bylaw.
Okay, and the only reason I asked about it was whether or not the town has a liability to ensure. That the uses do not conflict with one another and that there are sufficient. Resources for the the purposes of both parties.
Understood.
Mister Chairman, I've got a quick procedural question.
Okay, Clark.
For counsel. It it seems like we would just, we could vote to rescind the modification. That we made the original decision last year. Or we could vote. To revert the. For sale units or ownership units to rental. Is there a, is there, is one method better or simpler?
No, both both obviously require the board to vote to approve. Both require a written decision. Both have to be afforded. Both in theory are modifications of your original decision and would trigger an appeal period if anybody out there felt that they were aggrieved by it. But I think really rescission versus just. Vote to convert these back to rental units. It really procedurally makes no difference.
Same thing, okay.
Agreed, but you would need four votes to approve either pathway.
Correct.
I have a question.
Okay, I'm I'm happy to report we have four standing board members in attendance this evening. We can deliver.
Hi Kevin, I think Birgit needs, Birgit has.
Yeah, I see her hand up. Go ahead.
I I would still like to ask what motivated this move. I mean, I I do see the. Great benefit for the for the town, but why was this, you know, kind of move? You know, kind of, or how was this move motivated? Have what? Triggered it and it's kind of like, what is the advantage for the applicant? I mean, I. I think it's great that we have that benefit, but why? There must be another reason and just be.
You don't trust us, do you?
Be nice to town is not a good reason.
Yeah, I I was hoping no one would ask me that question because I'm not sure I know the answer. I can tell you, I received a call and said we'd like to switch it. No one told me why. But I since learned that I believe that it's tied to the financing of the property and that the bank. Initially committed to extending the loan on the basis that it would be apartments versus condominium units and somehow. The bank. Yes, rentals versus apartments and that somehow kind of worked its way into the pro forma of the bank and. The basis for the loan and and that was the reason why we're switching it back.
Okay.
Okay, if we don't have any other planning board member comments and or questions, do we have an opportunity? Do we have any public attendees with questions?
Yes, so you have one member in the audience who would like to come forward to speak.
Okay, I'd like you to promote them and I'd ask that person or party to identify themselves by name and address, please.
Good afternoon. Paul Kirsch, thirty-nine Old Coach Road. I am the chairman of the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. And. We have a a long history with this. Facility since since its inception, we've been involved with the different. Owners of the property over the last several years as we're obviously concerned about adding to our housing stock for the affordable housing unit. So we are a huge proponent of this being converted back to apartments so that we get credit for all fourteen units. I've also discussed this within the last twenty-four hours with a few members of the housing trust. Who I I don't believe are able to attend at the short notice. They are also proponents of of having this converted back to apartments as well. We had a public meeting last night with some residents. Where we were looking to evaluate property. Farther up in Cohasset and they had a lot of concerns about One Pleasant. Was that able to be converted and other. Privately owned properties in in the village that we were hopeful that would be converted for the sole purpose of adding more units to the housing stock. So having apartments is the most critical thing for us. Because the state counts all the units towards your affordable housing stock, so it's it is very critical. If you take a look at Avalon. Twenty units are deed restricted, but all two hundred count for us in our housing stock. That's how the state calculates housing stock for everyone. So it's 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 vital for us when units are built with four or more contiguous. Units that if they're apartments, it benefits us greatly. So we really. Recommend and support a positive result here that would convert this back to apartments. It was designed that way. And I think that. It would definitely benefit the town and and also offer an opportunity for various residents to be able to move in and out of town. We have a lot of seniors in town that have nowhere to go. They want to downsize from their colonial to a small apartment. There really is nowhere else to go in town, so condominiums really aren't as attractive for those who want to downsize. As much as apartments are, so that gives them the flexibility to be able to move around.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Just to comment on that. This is now the second project that I'm involved with where we've done this. The first was over at Stop and Shop, Mister Stasko's project. And it's really critical. For the town to signal to. Property owners of significant properties that this type of scenario is. Something that the town desires and would work with the applicants to achieve because. These applicants did don't necessarily need to do this. In Stasko's case, you know, he's a longtime resident, so he he cares about the town. This particular applicant is lives out actually on the West Coast. And he's taking direction and cues from his local team who are who are advising him. So the actually the original applicant, Mister Sheeran is a Cohasset resident as well and was taking that same advice. So I think it's really important to signal, to throw the signal out that you're willing to work. Because it's a mutual benefit situation. Thank you.
Thank you for that additional information and Paul, your your points are well taken and appreciate you providing additional detail on the importance of this. Application to the town, to its residents and its future residents. Cassandra, are there any any other parties out there that wish to be heard on this matter in the public domain?
You do have a question, yeah.
Okay, Birgit, hold on. I can circle back to you. Birgit, let's get through the citizens and that have been waiting. And if there's any additional clarification we need from the board, I'll circle back to you.
So Cindy Matheson, who is a member of the Affordable Housing Trust, used the chat. Her address is one fifty-five Sawyer Street. She wishes to support all that Paul just stated.
Thank you for that comment by chat, Cindy. Duly noted. Any others, Cassandra?
That is all.
Okay, okay, Birgit.
Just just information question. So have any of the units been sold so far?
No.
None none have been sold? For all fourteen could, you know, kind of be converted into, you know, kind of pure rental units?
The entire building is one owner. Yep, so the answer is yes.
Yes, because I know they had a couple of open houses, you know, kind of some time ago, right? And so on. So so nothing, you know, kind of materialized out of those actions.
There was no purchase and sale agreements executed and no, no, no units sold.
Okay, barring any other. Public members that wish to be heard on this matter, we'll close out the public hearing on this matter. Any board members? Any further questions from board members? If not, we're gonna close out the public comment period for this matter. I entertain a motion for this from board members.
I'll make a motion. That we modify the decision. From last year to have the project be all rental. Not condominium or sales as was in the original decision of several years ago.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor, alphabetical roll call, please. Okay, all in favor, alphabetical roll call, please.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
And Beckett Smith, vouch, aye.
The motion passes unanimously. I appreciate the applicant. Putting forth this motion in the form that they did. I appreciate the efforts of the applicant and its team. To accommodate the town, um, with regard to other options prior to where we were here. And the flexibility afforded to, um, the town, uh, for the best interest of it. By the applicant and its team here. Really appreciate that and, um, note that and thank you for that.
Thanks for the hearing tonight. I appreciate those comments, Kevin, and the, and the vote of the board. Thank you so much. And we'll continue to put forward a good project here in the town. Thank you.
Best of luck to you. Thank you. And we have, uh, and one other item on the agenda, um, Cassandra, if you wanna explain that, um. I believe you're in the best position to do so.
Sure, that's no problem. Uh, so the other item on your agenda is for closing out balances. Uh, for prior applications. So these are balances that are still standing, um, within the town's accounting system. They were used for, um, engineering deposits that were taken for applications. That were either not used at all or remaining funds after we paid the peer reviewer, um. There's a number of different addresses and we're just trying to close them out and returns the funds back to the applicants.
And this would be a, um. Straight up approval that we would, you would, you would call for from the board to do so?
Versus singling out each address?
Y- yeah, can we do it in, in mass the way you've prepared it in a memo?
Yes.
Okay.
Quick question, quick question. So apart from the peer reviews, what are these funds used for? So they are provided by the applicant, I s- I assume. And what, what are they used for apart from the peer review?
Nothing.
Okay.
And none of these properties have any existing and or future, um, peer reviews in the queue. So, uh, these would be, um, returned, um. With the understanding that should something change, they would have to, applicants would have to go through the formal application process and provide monies for such. Uh, in the future. This is just an accounting, um, measure. Yeah, these, um, have been, um. Some of them, some of them are a bit longer dated than others, but all are appropriately, uh, to be returned at this time. So I would, um, request a motion to do so.
Uh, I'll make a motion to, um. Uh, return the unused funds, uh, as outlined in the agenda of applicants. Um, money's not used, um. That's it.
Second.
All those.
Carolyn.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobson, aye. Beckett Smith, vouch, aye.
And the ma- matter passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Cassandra, for doing that. And then just, um, with regard to our next meeting, um. If, um, Cassandra, uh, and or Carolyn just wanna provide a quick primer on that, is that our next one? Uh, Cassandra, am I getting ahead of myself on this?
Uh, so two things, you do also have minutes from August twentieth. But yes, your, uh, next meeting, so you have, technically you have a meeting scheduled for October first. But you don't have anything pending for that. Um, and then the meeting following that is October fifteenth and, uh, pending folks being able to attend. Carolyn was going to do a conflict of interest and ethics training for the board.
And any matters that would possibly appear for the fifteenth would be moved to, um, uh, following meeting. So that we, the fifteenth would be exclusively for the training and we could limit our time and focus on that.
Yes, so the deadline for new regular applications for the October fifteenth meeting was today and we didn't get any in. So the only exception to that would be if we got an A in our application in and I can work with that applicant should it happen to, um, work with them.
Okay.
Thank you.
That, yeah, that, that, that sounds great. Is the fifteenth okay with attendees that we? What do we look at?
Sorry, Kevin, I will tell you, I will not be at the fifteenth. I have a conflict, unfortunately, sorry.
Okay, so, um, any others with an issue or can we get this box checked and, um, and be informed? And Carolyn, will it be you or designee?
It will be me.
Perfect. Okay, great, um, Deirdre, we will miss you. We always do. And if there's a way for you to get the training perhaps afterwards, um, I'm sure Carolyn will have an opportunity to share it up.
You're muted, Deirdre.
Is it gonna be a Zoom meeting? Not it? I- is it gonna, it's gonna be a Zoom meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, and, and the conflict of interest I have to do regularly where I am for the town. So I, I, I know Carolyn knows. I, I, I just did it.
Sure. All right, understood. Um, and then we'll get to the minutes a moment, just with regard to the October first meeting, um. When do we know whether that can be, um? We, we, we would, we'll not have to have that. Is that something we know mid, midpoint next week?
Uh, I mean. I would say it's pretty safe now that, to say that you wouldn't have anything for that. It's only two weeks from now.
Got it. All right. Don't hear any sighs or anything from board members with regard to that, so we will soldier on minutes, um. Were there any changes or anything to the minutes, um, or were they, they captured, sufficiently captured? I suspect anything was. I didn't have any or see any.
I'll make a motion to approve the twentieth of August minutes.
I will, yep, second that. And alphabetical roll call, please.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Amy Glassmeyer, aye.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobson, aye. And Beckett Smith, vouch, aye.
So the approval of the minutes passes unanimously as well. We are on a roll. But I believe that's it for our agenda items. Any other issues out there, any members? All right.
No.
I'd like to say enjoy the rest of the daylight, but we're really starting to lose that fast these days. Do what you can, everyone. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Everyone.